This conference will now be recorded. Commissioner Walk. Okay. Anybody hear from Commissioner Walk? He was with us just shortly before. I don't see him on the call yet. There he is. All right, Mike, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. All right. Thank you, Randy, for that, and I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 17th meeting of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners. Renee, could we please start everything off with a roll call?
Sure, Commissioner Walk.
Here.
Commissioner Mobilio. Commissioner Seton.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here. All right, the gang's all here. Next, if everybody will please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have our flag right here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. I would like to note that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted on board docs for the public's access. I'd also like to note that the Board did meet an executive session on February 5th, February 10th, and also again prior to this meeting, February 17th, to discuss personnel and legal matters. With that being said, we're going to move right into our agenda this evening. And first on our agenda for consideration and possible action are our meeting minutes from February 3rd. I'll give the Board a chance to look at those if they have not already. Were there any questions or comments from the Board on the February 3rd meeting minutes? Matt, can you still not hear anybody? Are you okay? I think Matt had to jump off and jump back on. He was having audio problems. I think he jumped back on. All right. Any questions or comments? None from the Board on the meeting minutes? Do I hear a motion to move forward with approval of the February 3rd, 2021 Board of Commissioner meeting minutes?
Removed.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Walk. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Renee?
Commissioner Walk.
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio.
I'm afraid I think he dropped, Renee.
He just arrived. He just arrived.
Okay, cool.
Commissioner Mobilio.
We're talking about the meeting minutes, Matt.
Okay, I can, I can hear you now. I had to log back in a couple of times, but it's working now.
So you're, it's at your vote for the approval of the meeting minutes?
We're on roll call vote, Matt, for meeting minutes.
Well, I'm here and I vote in favor of the meeting minutes being approved.
Okay. Commissioner Seton.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting minutes approved. Thank you, everybody. Next, on the agenda, we have no presentations, no ordinances. However, we do have a variety of resolutions for consideration and possible action this evening. First is a resolution granting preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled, I am never going to be able to say that correctly. So Renee or somebody, can you help me? It's the, oh. The mosque of Pennsylvania, because I can't say the, I can't pronounce it, the Shai Atina Ashiri Jamak of Pennsylvania. Dave, how, how did I do on that? You're presenting this evening.
Yeah, I was just going to say mosque.
I think, I think I might have did, did all right on that.
Did all right. We will hopefully hear the proper pronunciation later. So this is, this application was before the planning commission at their December 17th meeting. The property is located at 1500 Ridgeview Drive, so right behind the town hall. The plan is, proposes tearing down the existing mosque, replacing the larger mosque. Park lot and stormwater improvements related to that. We note that we have not received the LVPC Planning Commission letter, which was a condition of approval. And then also, we note that the timeline is up tonight. So if there's no action on the Board's behalf, we would need a waiver from the time limitation to review the plan. With that, I could hand it over to any representative for the application if there isn't anybody here.
Is there anybody here this evening to represent the mosque that would like to speak? Randy, you might want to open the chat on that one, just in case they can't. Let me type it in the chat. Um. Thank you.
Did receive a, or if we haven't heard anything.
Nope.
Okay. We did receive a acceptance of the conditions of the resolution. So the applicant has expressed that they're okay with the conditions on the, on the resolution.
Dave, do you anticipate any concerns? I, I don't, but I just thought I'd ask you from the LVPC, since we haven't gotten that back yet.
As far as the LVPC, typically, the reviews are done based on their land use plan. And as long as it's basically, for the most part, you know, I'm not going to put words in the LVPC's mouth. But in general terms, if it's an existing development and it's a redevelopment of that property, it's typically found to be consistent. So I, you know, and then they, there's also a stormwater review that they do, which is also kind of down the road. So the letter that we're waiting on, I don't anticipate a negative determination.
Me either. I just thought I'd ask in case there were any conversations that you might have had directly with them. So that, that answers my question. Are there any questions or comments on this particular resolution for consideration tonight from the Board?
I just have one observation. I did have a resident ask me about this, and since the building currently stands at 6,000 square feet, and the plan is to raise it and then build a 26,000 square foot building in its place. The plan proposes to remove 13 parking spaces from this site. And a resident advised that when there's an event here on this property, cars are frequently parked on the grass and lined up the street. So I just wanted to share that concern and ask, Dave, maybe you could advise, since we're making, or they are proposing a building significantly larger, which would make sense that, you know, more, more events or more people could be housed against the fact that 13 parking spaces will be removed from that site.
Yeah, my, my only comment on that would be that if it needed a waiver from the parking standards, it would have been included in the, in the application. So I believe it's, it meets the parking requirements for a mosque. So I don't have anything, and I don't recall if that was brought up at the planning commission for discussion. So I can't really comment too much on that.
Diane, if you don't mind, maybe I can help you. The, there was a surplus of parking spaces as compared to what was required based upon the building size. Now, obviously, you know, when they have large events, they exceed what's normally required of a mosque. But based upon the zoning data and the tables that they use, they had additional parking spaces. The reason for the removal of spaces is that they're adding a few more sidewalks around, so they wanted to mimic the impervious cover. So there was no change in stormwater from the site.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions from the Board on this particular resolution for consideration? Any questions from the public? We do have the chat open if you can't. If you have any questions? I am not seeing any. That being said, thank you, Dave. That being said, do I hear a motion to move forward with the resolution granting preliminary final approval to the major plan entitled, The Mosque of Pennsylvania?
Removed.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Seton. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Walk.
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio.
Aye.
Commissioner Seton.
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, Dave. All right, next this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a resolution granting preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled, Proposed Parking Lot Improvement, 798 Housman Road. Dave?
Yes, so this was another application that was at the December 17th meeting of the Planning Commission, where the Planning Commission recommended approval. Property located at 798 Housman. It's the Lehigh Valley Health Network building. And it included driveway, parking lot upgrades, and stormwater. And I would note that in addition, this application, like the last one, if there's no action, we would require a waiver from the time limitation to continue, because we're up against the deadline as well.
Dave, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Board on this particular request this evening? All right. Any questions from the public? We have the chat open, Randy.
Yes, I believe.
No, it's disabled right now. There we go. Now it's open. Yep. Any questions from the public? A second? All right, hearing none. Do I hear a motion moving forward with granting a preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled, Proposed Parking Lot Improvement, 798 Housman Road?
Removed.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Walk. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Renee?
Commissioner Walk.
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio.
Aye.
Commissioner Seton.
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. All right, last but not least, under resolutions for consideration, we have a resolution, amending resolution number 2019-67, which granted preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled, 1960 Harold Avenue, to include an additional waiver granted to Saldos Section 312-39E. Dave, it's all you.
Yes, so this is an application, it was before the Board of Commissioners at the December 18th, 2019 meeting. The application is for some lot consolidations and subdivisions to put in a bank of five townhouses. They're requesting a waiver from that section of the Saldos, which deals with the soil erosion and sediment control plans that are reviewed by the Lehigh County Conservation District. In the memo, it kind of describes the, the, the Saldos section. Staff has concerns that if these requirements are waived, there's really no capability to enforce the soil erosion and sediment control plan. And being that it is located in an existing developed area, residential area, any soil erosion would definitely be felt and seen. So we're, we have concerns about that. And maybe Tony, I don't want to put you on the spot, you can talk about kind of how the normal process is and what gets waived. That they're, what they're, they waived.
Sure, sure. Um. In a normal process, most of the land development projects, everything over an acre requires an MPDS permit, so you're required to go to the state. That's pretty standard. This is a different application. It's under an acre. Now, South Whitehall Township has entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Conservation District, that the township has agreed that every project, regardless what size it is, would be submitted to the Conservation District for their approval. In turn, the district has outlined some things that they will help the township with in terms of reinforcements, some MS4 items. So in every instance, we have had these projects, even though the, the small size, we have requested that they go to the district and get their approval letter. In this instance, we will do the same. We'll be consistent with every other project.
I'm confused. Wait, Tony, we will be consistent, or they're asking for a waiver from that?
I'm sorry, you're correct. They are asking for a waiver not to go to the Conservation District. The township engineer, our stance is that we would, we would consider to be, the township should be consistent with the process that's normally followed. The applicant themselves is asking for a waiver for that process. I apologize.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Thank you. Is there, is there anyone here from, from the applicant tonight that, that wanted to speak on the subject matter? Dave or Tony, do you know?
I don't know.
Yeah, this is Dave Pissaco. I actually thought Mike, Mark Bradbury was on. He can speak better than me. But this project, this was submitted to the Conservation District a long time ago, and they said it does not meet their criteria, so they did not need to review it.
Dave? Go ahead. Go ahead, Tony.
Mr. Pissaco, based upon a conversation I had with the district, my understanding is there was no application or fee submitted. Therefore, they, the district doesn't review that, and they put it in a drawer. So because there's no MPDS permit, they might have mentioned that, but they don't review unless an application and a fee is, is submitted along with the plan.
My understanding was that we gave it to them, they did not want to, and they, they felt no need to go any further.
So Mr. Pissaco, would it be possible, if we, if we, it's just a thought, if we tabled this this evening, that you could get this resolved? Or is this one of the ones that needs an extension on it for, because it's met a deadline?
Yes, so.
We had already gotten an extension. I'm not sure how, how much, much longer we have.
The, it, my notes say that it's up March 18th. So we would have another meeting between then.
So is that, is that a thought?
What can happen that quickly, I'm not sure. We may need to get another extension.
Possibly, yes.
Dave, this is Greg Adams.
Yes.
The deadline there is to record the plan by March 18th. Right now, if you don't grant the waiver, then they have to go to the LCCD to get their ENSC plan reviewed and approved. And that's greater than a month's long process. So if you do table this and then come back and grant them the waiver, they should be close, although it would be a tight fit. If you do not grant the waiver, then they would need another extension guaranteed.
Thank you, Greg.
Didn't you receive a letter from, from the Conservation District to expect that they felt no need to re-review this?
Dave, we, I did receive a letter from Mark Bradbury that the district sent him. They were only looking at, looking at it from their requirements, NPDES permit greater than an acre. That does not match up with the township's requirements of looking at an ENSC plan if more than 5,000 square feet of space is disturbed, or, or over 10,000 for a stormwater management plan. So their regulations did not require it, however, ours do.
Why did it take this long for this to come up? We could have had this done a year ago.
Indeed. The only thing that I had on this up till about a month ago was a transmittal of sending the plan over to LCCD. It said no more than that. We simply assumed that it was up for review and that we would receive a comment letter back. However, because no application nor fee was sent along with it, they didn't review it. They simply put it in a drawer, and we never knew that up until a month or so ago. So here we are.
All right, I obviously misunderstood. I, I thought they had no intention of reviewing it because it was not necessary. I apologize.
So in an effort to, to help move this along and, and get the information that's needed, I'll defer to, you know, Dave Pissaco and Dave Manhart and Greg, whatever you feel is the best approach, unless the Board has another thought. But, you know, at this point, I think, you know, giving him the opportunity to get the information before we waive or don't waive makes sense. Any thoughts from the Board?
I agree.
Matt, Diane, Joe?
We'll, we'll move as quickly as we can. Yeah, I mean, I certainly favor of anything that isn't resolved, so.
Yep. So at this point then, I think.
Tabled.
Excellent. Tabling it seems to be the consensus, so hopefully the team can work together and get you some resolution on this quickly. Sound like a plan?
All right, sounds good.
All right, great, great. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
You got it. Have a great evening. All right, next this evening, under motions, we have two motions for consideration. The first is a motion granting Upper McConge Township's request to allow the installation of an advanced warning sign per PennDOT specifications in South Whitehall Township right of way. Renee?
Yeah, this is, I had received notice from Township Manager IBAC in Upper McConge that they had done a culvert weight study on Crackers Port Road. So this is a request to alert in the westbound truck drivers on Crackers Port in South Whitehall of the advanced warning of the weight limit to the culvert. Upper McConge has indicated that they are willing to provide and maintain the sign. So again, that's what they're looking for. Public Works was okay with this, speaking with the operations team there. And then one of Tony Talariti's suggestions was a second advanced sign in the event a truck would need to turn around ahead of Eck Road. So Upper McConge has agreed to that as well.
Excellent. Thanks, Renee. Any, any questions or comments for Renee on this particular motion for consideration this evening from the Board? Sounds like it makes sense to us. Any questions from the public?
I just had one question, Commissioner Morgan, I'm sorry. So to, just to reiterate, Renee, you said that we will be posting one closer to Eck Road?
Yes, in the, yeah, in the, in the event that, in advance of Eck Road, in the event that a truck would need to turn around, that there'd be room before they got to the culvert area.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I've got it. Any questions from the public? All right, that being said, do I hear a motion to move forward granting the Upper McConge's request to allow for the installation as explained?
Removed.
There's something in the chat?
Oh, I don't see anything in the chat. There is? I'm not seeing it. Why am I not seeing it? I'm not seeing the question in the chat.
I believe it went to organize for some reason. I apologize.
Is that you, Brian?
That's me.
Did you, did you have the question, Brian?
Yes, I did, so.
All right, go ahead. Go ahead with your question.
Two questions. Do you know if Upper McConge is going to put advanced warning signs along Blue Barn to prevent those trucks from getting down to that far? And also, maybe the township wants to consider putting signage closer to the former Covenant Transport Truck Terminal that's now up for lease to all interested parties that may want to utilize that facility to make them aware of, you know, they would rather go towards 309 than that way, than have to go up Eck and then go to an intersection. And so it might be prudent to put another sign, you know, closer to the Covenant Transport former location. Those are my two comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. I'll defer to, to the team, Renee and Randy, your thoughts on that, and Tony, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's up for discussion. I think we can discuss that. And Brian, I'm not quite sure, I did not get word where Upper McConge was putting them on Blue Barn or not.
I'm pretty confident they will, but I can reach out to Bob. I got to call him on some other things for my work, so I'll ask him. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. We'll, we'll definitely take those other things under advisement. Good, good information. Thank you. All right, did we, did we vote on that yet, or did I?
You didn't vote. I thought you had a motion.
I, yeah, I got confused, because I can't see the comments. All right, so was there anything else in the chat? Because I'm not seeing any chat comments.
No.
Okay, great. All right, so we had a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly, I think that was. And did we have a second from Commissioner Seton? Was that you who spoke up after that?
Yep.
All right, so we have a motion, and a motion from Commissioner Kelly, a second from Commissioner Seton. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Renee?
Commissioner Walk.
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio.
Aye.
Commissioner Seton.
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye, motion carries. Wonderful. All right, next, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. For the, the last resolution for the 1960 Harold Avenue that we tabled, I believe we need to make a motion. But the Board tabled that, because it is listed as a resolution on our agenda.
Um, yeah, we can definitely make a motion to table that. Good point. All right, so we'll go back to that one. I'll make a motion. We table resolution amending the 1960 Harold House. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Kelly. Can I have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Walk.
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio?
Aye.
Commissioner Sutton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Aye. Motion carries. Table that particular resolution for consideration, thank you. Okay. So, next this evening, under motions, we have a motion for consideration requesting permission to proceed with replacement of park amenities. Mr. Cookett, welcome.
Hello, good evening. So this is dating back to early August there when Tropical Storm Azase hit Cover Bridge Park, and it was one of the worst storms that park seen, from my understanding, in 80 years. It did do a lot of damage to a lot of our park amenities down there, including either completely removing, washing away, or damaging 40 picnic tables, three grills, six player benches, and 20 trash cans. I worked with finance and got a handful of quotes to replace this equipment, and we are respectfully requesting that the board approve the purchase of this equipment from the park catalog in the amount of $52,462.32.
All right, thanks, Mike. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Mike, how much money did we get for, for insurance for that?
Scott hasn't given me the final figure. I believe it was around $80,000, but I do believe some of that may have been used for the property damage off of Brickyard, or I'm sorry, Iron Bridge as well.
Okay, so we're not quite sure how much.
To that, hang on. Through the tropical storm, we received a total of $83,000 for three different locations. Covered Bridge Park was $59,039.
Okay, so we got all the money that we need to replace everything has been, is covered by insurance.
Correct.
Fantastic. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I just had a comment or question, Mike, please. So, understanding the damage here in your report, obviously we had damage from Superstorm Sandy again. Just moving forward, is there a plan that the township has in mind to secure these, some of these items differently, or locate them differently in the park? So if we do have another storm event that causes this type of damage, again, we may be able to preserve some of these items?
Absolutely, yeah. And even, so these are commercial-grade equipment, and they do, you know, they take two or three adults to move. They weigh close to 200 pounds, these tables. And we were, quite frankly, blown away that like 16 tables under Pavilion 3 all just disappeared, washed away. So that just tells you the amount of water that was down there and the force that it had behind it. In addition, in other spots, what we had done was chain link them to some steel bolts in the concrete pad to keep them in place. But again, the force of the water actually broke a lot of the tables that were chained down. So, our only option will be, if we're seeing a storm of that magnitude coming through, will be to actually remove the equipment and get it to higher ground.
Oh, okay, thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? All right, is there anyone in the chat? All right, that being said, do we hear a motion to move forward with permission to proceed with the replacement of the park amenities through the park catalog at the amount of $52,462.32?
It's moved.
Motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Walk. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Renee?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio?
Aye.
Commissioner Sutton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, looking forward to the summer months and sitting at those new tables, Mike.
Absolutely.
All right, next this evening, under correspondence and information items, under boards and commissions, I'll, I'll, I'll report out again, we were typically doing this at the first meeting of the month, but I'll do it, I'll do it for both meetings. We have one planning commission position vacant, open right now, two civil service alternate positions, and one shade tree. We have some applications that we have received, and we are still accepting applications if anybody's interested. And we will begin some additional interviews very here, very soon, here in the near future. So, again, our, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, so you'll see this also advertised on our new website. I'm not going to go into detail, because I know that's going to be somebody else's discussion here in the, in the meeting a little later. So, you'll also see those recognized, those positions recognized on our new website that'll happen this week. So that's our update on boards and commissions.
Commissioner Morgan?
I'll, I'll, yeah.
I, I just have a quick question. How many applica, how many applications do we have so far for the planning commission opening?
We have so far for the planning commission opening, one, two, I believe it's five. And like, I've already reached out to Tracy to talk about getting some interviews set up, so at five at this point.
Thank you.
You got it, you got it. All right, next this evening, we have our civil service commission report for year 2020. Oh, yes.
Aye. I have a brief report out of the recent Finance Committee meeting.
Oh, very good, thanks. Thanks, Mike, that'd be great.
Okay.
Go ahead.
It's, it's pretty short. So our Finance Committee met with the auditor, and members of the Finance Committee are Commissioners Diane Kelly and myself, and from the Township Management, Renee Bickel and Scott Barrett. And we met with the two representatives from Herb Line, who's the auditor, back on February 11th. So we had our first meeting to discuss, we discussed several subjects, but primarily the outstanding audits. And as a committee, we're beginning to unpack the last 10 years' history of, you know, why the audits haven't been done since 2011. The staff aims to make positive changes to get everything in line to meet the audit statutory requirements in the future. And a lot of those changes are already in progress. The, the township and the auditor are targeting the 2016-17 audit completion by the end of March of this year, and the 2018-2019 audits completion by the end of June of this year. So that's good news, and we certainly need to hold on to that timeframe. As a committee, now that we had that meeting, we're now committed to hold monthly meetings to get updates on the process for completing the audits, and also to secure the improvements that have already been identified, that are required to do the future audits, and it's on time, per the law. Of course, our monthly meetings will address other South Whitehall Township financial issues, such as the ongoing COVID-19, COVID-19 impact on our budget performance. So that's our, our short update of our, our first reconvened Finance Committee meeting after several months, and this one being with the auditor. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions or comments from the board? All right. I failed to mention, I have a, I have an attachment here, some updates that I, I wanted to mention, some upcoming meetings. On Thursday, February 18th, we have our Planning Commission meeting at 7:30. On Monday, February 22nd, we have our Green Advisory Council meeting at 6:00 PM. On Tuesday, February 23rd, we have another Planning Commission meeting at 7:30. And on Wednesday, we have, February 24th, we have a Board of Commissioners workshop meeting on Where's Dam that starts at 6 o'clock. On Wednesday, February 24th, we also have a zoning hearing board meeting starting at 7 o'clock. And on Monday, March 1st, we have a Public Safety Commission meeting starting at 7:00 PM. All right.
Commissioner Morgan, I just had a quick question about the schedule for next Wednesday with the Where's Dam workshop being scheduled at 6:00 PM, and then we have the zoning hearing at 7:00. The last time we had a workshop back-to-back like that, we had limited time. Is the situation going to be the same, or do we have a different platform to be able to have?
We have a different platform.
We're utilizing a different platform. So, the zoning hearing board will be utilizing the township's typical platform that they would typically see. So, for the Where's Dam workshop, make sure to go to the website. It's a different link. It's a WebEx conference, so, so again, you'll need to look at the homepage for that. And that was also advertised as the link.
With the link, very good, thank you.
Great, great. All right, so, moving on to the Civil Service Commission report for year 2020, Renee or Scott? I'm not sure who's presenting on this one this evening.
I'm not quite sure, is Scott Hope is, I don't believe is here.
I didn't know if it was Scott Barrett, Scott Hope?
Oh, no, this is Civil Service Commission. This is the annual report that civil service prepares, and it just kind of goes over the year of civil service.
Okay.
This is not me.
Yeah, with civil service in 2020 and the meetings they had.
So, Renee, would you, if Scott Hope's not with us this evening, would you mind just giving a real brief on it? That would be great.
Yeah, I mean, it just goes over, Randy, can you scroll up the screen? Yeah, it just goes over the, what the board did. Randy, can you roll down? It talks about the reorganization each year, who the officers were in the, in civil service, how many times we met. We did have Connie Kunda resign. She retired from the commission after several years of service. And just again, we did go over and create an eligibility list during the course of the year. And that's really it. We met in all virtual meetings.
I'd like to note, again, that we do have two alternate positions available on civil service, so if there is anybody interested, make sure and put in your application.
Yeah, if you're interested, this bill, board typically meets around 1 o'clock in the afternoon.
All right. Thanks, Renee. Any questions or comments from the board? All right, any from the public? All right, moving on. My gosh, this is, this is amazing. So, we have nothing under direction and discussion items this evening. We'll shoot right into our old business. We already mentioned, we have a workshop set up for Where's Dam this, on, on the 24th at 6:00 PM. But Renee, I'll defer to you on the campus renovation project and credit cards.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yeah, yes, Commissioner Walk.
Good question on Where's Dam. So, we're already aware of this. I believe Commissioner Kelly requested the, 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 the report that was submitted about Where's Dam. And it'd be real good if we could get that, you know, as the commissioners, if we could get that like, sort of now. So we have at least a week to take a look at it prior to the workshop.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, as I had discussed in an email back to you, I have worked with our engineers on our packet, and you'll be receiving that in the next day or so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, Renee, what do we got on our campus renovation and credit cards?
Campus renovation, we continue to be almost at the finish line. Next week, we are anticipating certificate of occupancies for the PD and PW areas, and also on March 5th, the administrative level of the building, we're anticipating certificate of occupancies. Really, they're finalizing right now, just, you know, it's the finishing touches around. The public meeting room is not going to be, that will be the last part that's complete. Every other portion of the building will be completed, but the public meeting room will be the last, and it's sort of an isolated area to the left, so again, that's an area that won't be accessed right away. We anticipate that a little bit later into March. We are there in the process of setting up the furniture, and so again, we're anticipating those certificates of occupancy. In terms of project costs, at this point, we are $1,000 off of the projected costs. So, again, our total construction cost was $8,314,000, and we are there, so minus $1,000, not quite $1,000 difference, so.
Oh, excellent, excellent job, great.
In terms of credit cards, rolling into credit cards, I believe at the next meeting, we're going to have a demonstration of the credit card payment. There will also be a YouTube video on the credit card payment. There will be a few steps that you need to go through to initiate that credit card payment, and the, I guess I'm just going to roll into my report a little bit, because not to steal Dave's thunder, but we are going to show you tonight, the, the website does go live tomorrow. We have worked hard, that, the team has worked hard to get information there. It's not going to be perfect the first day. It's continued to be a work in progress, but it will be up live tomorrow, hopefully by 4 o'clock in the afternoon. I think, I believe Dave is going to show us a little bit of it tonight. And then, rolling into the next meeting, once the website is live, you will see the, the credit cards. We finalized a, a bank account today with the credit card payments, and so that will be able to be there. But again, we will have a video on the process that residents will need to utilize to activate each one of their accounts for credit cards. So you will see that at the next meeting. But website is up tomorrow. Also wanted to let you know that we did receive word from Advanced Disposal that they will not be collecting trash tomorrow. We just received word from them this evening. Transfer station has closed, so trash will not be picked up in the township tomorrow. They will go to a Friday and Saturday pickup. Again, the transfer station had closed due to weather, so. And that might just get lost on the website at this point as we're moving to transition. We, we will put it there, but, but again, wanted to let people know in our transition, but no trash pickup tomorrow.
Thanks, Renee. Any questions for Renee from the board? All right, any questions from the public?
Hi, this is Mark Bradbury. I apologize I couldn't be on at 7:00 PM. Had some issues with my wife in the hospital. I didn't get a chance to hear what the decision was for the Harold Avenue waiver for the LCCD.
So Mark, Mark, what we decided to do is we made a motion to table it so that Mr. Pissaco was on the line and to, for you to gather some information that was still pending, and then come back to, for a final.
Did, did you get the letter from Greg Adams that I sent from LCCD? That I sent in, I know, last week?
Greg, I'll defer to you and Dave. I'm looking in the packet for what specifically he's putting in.
No, you did not. Tori, you did not get that letter.
Oh, you're, okay. Well, that explains why this didn't go through, because Kevin Frederick from the Conservation District sent us a letter that stated that we did submit a courtesy sent us a letter that stated that we did submit a courtesy copy to the Conservation District and that the Conservation District did not need to review the sediment erosion complaint because it did not meet the regulatory requirements for them to review it. And that's what we based our assumption on, that we, you know, had gotten information back from LCCD. I'm surprised that you didn't get that in your packet.
So Mark, I believe, go ahead Greg.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mark. Yeah, that, that letter got lost and I emailed you back this afternoon asking you to replace it. And apparently you didn't check your email between then and now.
No, I've been in the hospital with my wife, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. I understand, I understand. We, we did discuss that and we pointed out that LCCD has their set of regulations and we have ours. And although your development does not meet the LCCD requirements for plan review and ENSC plans, it does meet the township's requirement for an ENSC plan review. And we have a letter, how did we call that? Tony, memorandum of understanding?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, so basically, when we need an ENSC plan review, it goes to the LCCD because they are the experts in stormwater management.
Well, they're actually not experts in stormwater management. They're only experts in sediment erosion control and BMPs. They will not review stormwater. They, the, that's why they, they really don't like these smaller projects. On many occasions, we've discussed it with them. They're sort of a nuisance. And I understand why the township has that in their ordinance. You know, if somebody was to develop a piece of ground, you know, directly adjacent to a high quality stream or something where, you know, there was a potential for some real disaster. It gives the township the opportunity to say, you know what? Even though in our ordinance, it says that the, you know, Board of Commissioners can waive this. In this particular situation, we don't think it's wise to waive it because you're right against a stream or, or you're, there's a neighbor behind you that is directly downhill from you with a beautiful swimming pool and gardens. And I can see how on a case by case basis, that would be absolutely necessary. You know, in our case, we have nothing but a, basically a rubble pile, a lot of debris and brush in an abandoned alley behind us that, you know, with the size of our project, you know, we, we feel that obviously we don't have that particular situation. Now, you said it was tabled until you got further information. What information would you be looking for?
Mark, there, we tabled this discussion for our next meeting to allow time. Mr. Posaco was on the call. He agreed to that. To gather the, the information that, that Greg is referring to, that's required by the township so you can bring it back at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, is that two weeks from now?
That's, that's, it would be the first and third Wednesday of every month.
Oh, okay, so that's, that's not a month from now. It's just a couple of weeks.
Nope, just a couple of weeks. So you'll still have time, so, yeah, so Mr. Posaco is aware and you'll have some time to work with staff to get the information you need so that you can move forward.
Okay, thanks. I apologize again for being late, but thank you for listening.
No problem.
Okay.
No problem. Hope all is well. Take care. That's your wife.
Thank you very much.
You got it. All right. So we are going to move then into our community development report for this evening. Dave? Was it Dave, was it Dave Manhart? Where'd you go? You can't hide from me, Dave Manhart.
Apparently not. So I think what Renee was referring to was the website going live tomorrow. I've had some personal issues just as far as, you know, wanting everything to be perfect and my, our staff has kind of gotten me to the point where at some point we need to rip the Band-Aid off and just go with it. So we're at that point. We've done a pretty good job of bringing over all of the information from the old site. I think I can share my screen. Let me get this up here. So we've given some indications and you've seen some of it. Basically, everything's set up, you know, all the structure is virtually the same as far as departments. Boards and commissions all have their own pages. Services is a new page that was part of the Granicus platform and then the I Want To. So those two, we're really still kind of working on and fine tuning those. This is a hero slide, they call it, so it can scroll between images and text. We have our most popular buttons. These can be changed out based on clicks and, you know, whether we want things more readily available. We currently have the seasonal work map up, so this is for snow plowing or leaf collection. This also can turn off and on, so we can use different things. We have our news section, which we're currently populating with some of the news. Should have that before go live and then all the events are in there. So that's the basic structure of the homepage. Boards and commissions. Set up all the pages in a similar manner. So there's the standard text and board members. And then a link to that commission's meetings. All show up on that page. And then additionally, all the documents associated with that board or commission are available on that page. And it's just a folder structure. So you can get to packets, agendas, and minutes really easily just from that Board of Commission page. So we're going to use that as kind of our archive until we get the next piece of the puzzle, the peak agenda management. So that will handle meetings moving forward, but this is kind of how we'll handle the meetings, the past meetings. Just a quick peek at the services. This is some text that describes services from the existing website. So we just kind of, I kind of put in different icons and links to different pages on the website. I Want To, right now, we just have Apply For. I think my screen's not sized right, so I'm missing the contact. So the idea here is, you know, if we want to apply for a township job, Board of Commission. So these action words will all be here. So that a resident or a business owner wants to apply for something, they know, oh, there's Apply For. I can just go to that. So that's kind of how it's set up. The, we've been working hard on getting a lot of the past documents up and, you know, populating the webpage. And we're in a good place to go live with it and start working on some of the enhancements that are available with the Granicus platform. We have an advanced training coming up in a couple of weeks that'll kind of go over some more advanced functionality that we can start incorporating into it. One of the neat things about this website is it's called a responsive webpage. So it's designed to go between different devices. And we can quickly check and see what it looks like on different devices. So we can check and see what it looks like on a tablet or an iPhone. So it gives us that capability to know what it's going to look like on each of the different platforms. And I think that's it. It does take some time for the DNS entry to change over. We're hoping by, I think, by the afternoon, it should be all changed over. If it's not coming up as the old one or as the new one, it could just be a cached copy. So you would just have to refresh to try and find the new one. So, you know, as with any website, the most stressful part is to go live. Then, you know, then we can get it out there and we can start improving it as we, as we go.
Dave, it looks fantastic and we were only seeing the top of it, so that's, that's excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, look forward to that tomorrow. All right. Anything else, Dave?
Comp plan, so we, the survey has closed. We received over 600 respondents. We posted a, kind of a last call as recommended by the planning commission and that got us another 50 or so respondents, so that was great. We're currently analyzing the results and developing the, you know, the public input development scenario based on those inputs of how to grow, how should we grow and where should we grow? So that'll be forthcoming. We are working with Michael Baker to launch a kickoff meeting for these working groups. And the working groups will get into a little more detail of that meeting and, you know, expectations and things that'll come out of that meeting. It'll be a digital platform with breakout sessions. So we're pretty excited about how that's going to roll out. We are currently working on getting some subject matter experts to help guide the discussions of these different, guide discussions of the different subject areas as specified in the MPC.
Dave, with the working groups, are you, you know, we talked about this at the last meeting. Just making sure that you're, you know, we're making sure to touch on every, every stakeholder in the community, all different aspects of stakeholders, to make sure that they're all represented in these working groups. We're, we're making sure that that happens. Because do you have a set meeting date yet or is that still?
We don't have a meeting date. That's kind of contingent on the subject matter experts. But as soon as we get that, we will put it out and launch it. One of the great things about online meetings is we can record. And those recordings will be put out there on the web, on our new website. So that people that can't make the meetings will be able to virtually attend and watch recordings. There will be some opportunity for engagement post-meeting with surveys and some other online capabilities that we're going to work into those meetings.
Great, thanks Dave. Any questions for Dave? Any questions from the public?
There was a chat and I guess chats are going to organizer for some reason tonight.
Yeah, because I, I can't see any of the chat, so what, what, the chat, is there a question?
Cindy Smith asks, Mike or, Mike Baker from LTRIC. Michael Baker, it's, it's Michael Baker International is the engineering firm, but I'm hesitant to call them just an engineering firm. They're a big multinational firm that has a office in Allentown. And they do planning work, engineering work, architecture, landscape architecture. So they're a pretty multifaceted firm. And because they are such a big firm, they have a lot of neat, neat toys and widgets that we have available to us, especially for this digital engagement piece. So we're really looking forward to working with them.
I'm sorry, I, I worked with Mike Baker at LTRIC and I think your website, and I design websites. I think it looks really good. And Mike Baker used to work at LTRIC and that's why I asked, I'm sorry to take up your time.
No, no problem.
No problem at all.
Website platform is Granicus and they're a government solution. So they have experience with government websites and incorporating in, you know, some of the other pieces would be agendas and minutes. So we're looking forward to getting that rolling as well.
Great, thanks Dave.
Thank you.
Very good job, thank you.
So a little shift tonight, I apologize Scott, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, because I should have hit this under direction and discussion, but it's related to, to finance. We do have our partners from the Chamber of Commerce here this evening, Ashley and Jess, who are going to give a brief report out on our small business COVID grant program that's rolling right now. So Ashley and Jess, the floor is yours, just to report out on where we stand.
Yes, ladies. Hello, hello, good evening commissioners. Ashley and I are very excited to give you an update on where we are on this partnership for our small business grant program made possible by all of you. Again, we cannot emphasize enough that we've talked to many businesses. Actually Renee had given us the business directory of over 500 businesses. And we've been making cold calls because we don't have emails for everybody telling them about this application and this opportunity for them to apply. I'm happy to report, we've had 15 businesses and applications completed. And when I say completed, means their W9s and their business license, the things, the, the attachments that we need to complete it. So there are other businesses that have applied, but they're not completed until we have the supporting documents. So over the next couple of days too as well, we will be continuing to make those cold calls, feed on the street. Hopefully, you know, get out there on Friday with the weather that we have tomorrow, but really informing them about this opportunity. As we know, not everybody has social media, not everybody is reading their emails right now. So these cold calls have been really good to connect with the business owners and tell them about the opportunity. Again, I just want to thank you for your leadership. These business owners are reaching out to us and we do have some comments right from the application so that you could hear from them how much this means. So I'm going to turn it over to Ashley.
Thanks Jess. As Ashley mentioned, we're doing cold calls, but in addition to that, our advertising or marketing to get the word out, social media, as you've hopefully seen, we've been posting a lot on community pages, the chambers pages, all forms, Instagram, LinkedIn, Facebook, things like that. Also, thank you to like media outlets like The Morning Call for spreading this information. And we are also sharing via email, the application link with members, but also non-members whose information we have on file, whether they had been members or prospective members. One thing we also wanted to share with you was a quote from one of the businesses. So they have a section where they fill in the reason for applying for the grant. So this person is explaining what they're using the funding for. The very last line says heartfelt thanks to Southland Hill Township for acknowledging the plight of small businesses and making this program available. So thank you to all of you, five commissioners, for your desire to support our businesses and to the staff for helping with this as well. You can see right then there, within our first 15 applicants, we had someone who expressed their thanks. So thank you all for your leadership with this.
I will say, the communication that we've had through the phone calls, we email them immediately with the link and the guidelines, which again is hosted on the Greater Chambers page as we are seeing applications come in. But people are applying right away. So it is, it tells me that the need is still there. So it is, it tells me that the need is still there and any little bit will help them. So we just wanted to give you an update on kind of where we are, again, 15 completed. We have many more that have applied, however, we just are, we're presenting the 15 completed at this point because we have all their attachments.
Ladies. All right, any questions or comments for Ash or Jess? Great job. Thanks for all your hard work on this. Look forward to hearing more, so good job. All right, Scott. Sorry.
All good, all good.
Excellent, thanks.
Good evening, commissioners. In terms of the finance department and where we're at, as was stated before from Mike about the Finance Committee meeting, we had a productive meeting where we discussed primarily the audits and our initiatives to rectify the situation from 10 years ago. So right now, our main focus is Audit 17 and 18, and that will soon shift to 19 and 20 as, as we have time to, to get into those. Another thing, another area that we are focusing our time is in terms of financial reporting. We're going to make some changes just to help the, just to, just to help you as a board better understand how the numbers for the financial statements look. I think there's just some efficiencies that we, we've identified that it'll just be better. So we're, we're going to be able to present that to the board in your next financial statement packet for the, the January financials that we're still working through right now. So that's one area. Another thing we're working on is taking a hard, deep look at our business privilege program. We're, we're going to work with Dave Manhart in Community Development to explore the idea of, of a munis module for the business privilege program and, and just to get all our information as we, you know, get further encompassed with our enterprise resource planning tool. I think that'll be a good direction we can go that. So those are, those are the main things that, that we're involved in. There's a lot of other small, small projects that we're involved in, but, but not so much, not so much pressing as, as the audits. So that's our, that's our main priority and that's our main focus right now.
Hey, Scott?
Yes, Mike.
Just, just a clarification, you said the primary focus is on 2017, 18, and then you'll get on to 2019. I believe the reason you didn't mention 2016 is because the township work is done and it's been turned over to the auditor.
That is correct, yeah.
That's a clarification.
Sorry, I forgot to mention that, yeah. Yep, that is correct. And in terms of 17, 18, there's, there's just a few wrap-up items on the 17 sections. And 18 has a little bit more work than 17 does, but we're, we're almost through 17. So I, I see the light at the end of the tunnel in terms of a few of these projects, which is really good and encouraging for me as this has been a huge focus of my efforts here at the township. And so it's, it's good, it's healthy for me to see a growth, especially during February where we're scheduled to get more snow and it's, you know, sometimes hard to see progress.
Thank you, Scott.
Hey, thanks, Scott. Any questions for Scott and the board? All right, any from the public? And I can't see the chat, so Randy or Mike, if you guys are seeing it. Assuming there's none. All right, so we're going to move right into Parks and Recreation. Mike?
Commissioner Morgan, I'll go ahead and report out for Parks and Rec tonight, if that's okay.
That'd be fantastic. Thanks, Randy.
Sure, no problem. I just want to draw everybody's attention to a few important upcoming dates for the Parks and Rec Department. April 17th, we're going to have our, I believe it's the fourth annual youth fishing derby down at Cover Bridge Park. We are always looking for volunteers for that event, so if you're interested, please reach out to Mike and he can get you all set up. Also, in April, we have our first public meeting for the Kohler Ridge Park Master Plan. Please mark your calendars for that. Again, that's going to take place on April 22nd at 6:00 PM. That's likely going to be a virtual meeting. More information will be posted on our website for that. There will be ample opportunities throughout this process for public involvement, feedback, comments, surveys, all types of thing to gather as much information we can from our residents to make sure this turns into the park that everybody hopes it does. And then leading right into May, we're hopeful to cut the ribbon for the Cover Bridge Park Playground that was started last year. We've got a few small items to wrap up, but that project is nearing completion as well.
Yay.
Thanks, Randy. All right, any questions from the board? One more?
One more thing, I wanted to let everybody know we are starting to hire for the summer playground program. So if you know any seniors in high school or college, or college students that are looking for a summer job, they have a lot of fun in this position, so please spread the word. We're looking for applications. And more information's on our website located under employment opportunities.
Thanks, Randy. All right, any questions or comments for Randy? All right, any from the public? Okay, moving right along. Chief Dorney, what do you got for us?
Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, I'll talk some, about some stats. We handled 1,196 calls for service and wrote those reports in the month of January, which was an increase of 146 reports compared to 2020. As usual, the number one call type that we handled for the month was EMS calls with 216. We had 57 reported crimes, which was a decrease of 33 compared to 2020 with the most frequent crime being shoplifting with nine. The UCRs by day, for some reason, our Mondays are our busiest day that we face with 12 crimes on a Monday, and a lot of that, somebody asked us that question at the Crime Watch meeting last night. And we believe that it turns out, most of the times over the weekends, people don't check their cars. Some businesses that are not open on the weekends, they come back on a Monday morning and they find that something occurred over the weekend, so that's when they report it. And that's when it shows up on our UCR reporting, so that would kind of be the answer to that. We had 24 arrests for the month. And again, some of these stats are a little difficult because we did just switch over to our new Mark 43 records management system. So we're still working out some of the bugs with getting some of the statistics put out to the public. So I do want to address a couple of things that we have going on with the Police Department. Very near and dear to my heart, June 21st through the 25th will be the third annual Youth Police Academy that we're going to be hosting again. And it's filling up very quickly. We already have, I believe, 22 applications in and submitted. So we do still have some openings, so the information's on our website, as well as I believe Jason put it on our, our social media pages. We have some applications, you can just reach out to Jason Grozier via email or phone, and he can get that to you immediately, so we can get that squared away. Another highlight that we have is that we just hired another police officer who started this past Monday. And she is in fact a township resident and also Parkland High School graduate, Monica Minkovich. And when you see her name and spell it, people will not call her that, but they will figure out the, the proper pronunciation is Minkovich. So we're happy to have her on board. She has the Act 120 certification and is starting her FTO program as soon as she gets uniforms. She'll have about two weeks of administrative duties, learning policy, some prep work that she has to do. She was previously employed as a part-time police officer in Marlboro Township in Montgomery County. And she's a recent graduate of the Allentown Police Academy, and the staff out there spoke very highly of her. So we are very happy to get her on board and get her started in the community. So next year, you'll see two brand-new female police officers on the road in the city of, or in the township. We have another female that's in the academy, in the, in the Allentown Police Academy currently, who will graduate in June and will start her field training program in July. So you'll have two brand-new police officers out there on the road by the end of the year, so very happy, happy about that.
Dave, that was great.
And that's all.
I'll just throw out a little shout-out. I, I think it was the very first virtual Crime Watch meeting that we had. That was last night, was that last night? I don't even know what night it is anymore, but I think that was last night. And Jason and Steve did a phenomenal job on that, and it was, it was highly attended. That was fantastic, so great job on that, for sure. Any questions for the chief from the board? All right, any questions from the public? All righty. Next, we will go to Randy. Do you have anything to report out on Public Works?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, I do have a few things. Couple of quick project updates, there, there's three main projects we're working on right now in the Public Works Department. First and foremost is the manhole-to-manhole sewer lining project. We are lining approximately 1,500 feet of a 21-inch interceptor line on Dorney Park Road, about 300 feet of the Shersville Line. These have all been TV'd for inspection. We don't have a, we, we still have a to-be-determined project start date. But obviously, once we get more information on that from the contractor, we will make sure to post information on our website and update the board as we, we have that information. We may have some minor road closures for a very short period of time, but we are going to try to control those closures with flagmen to keep traffic flowing. Any road closure may end up having for this project will obviously be posted on our website for ample notice to our residents and motorists through the township. We have ordered our VFDs for Jacoby, Jacoby Water Station. We're about six to eight weeks out for that project, so we'll advise the board when, when that continues progress. And last but not least, we are on our water risk and resiliency report with our engineer, Spot Stevens and McCoy. That report typically takes a look at your overall system for any deficiencies and any needed additional security measures. So those are three of the main things we're working on right now in, in Public Works in terms of capital projects.
Randy, any questions from the board? For Randy? All right, any questions from the public? And I'll defer to Randy for any that pop up. And I apologize to, to the audience this evening, we had to disable our, our chat viewing of the names. Some individuals had put inappropriate and rather rude names in there, so we disabled the names, which has affected our chat. So only the organizer can see it. So if there's no questions from the public, I can move on. All right, Tony, do we have anything from our engineer this evening?
We're continuing to stay busy. We have four plans on the Planning Commission this month, two actual, two meetings we're having. But we're continuing to review projects, trying to close out some of the things that are hanging, especially in these months that the construction has stopped. Hopefully, the weather gets a little bit better, we can wrap up some items and, you know, assisting Mike and Herb in Public Works whenever they need anything, so. That's all I have.
Any questions for Tony from the board? All right, any from the public? All right, all right, next this evening, we, do we have something?
No, I just said, thank you, thank you.
You got it, Tony, you got it. All right, next this evening, we have the opportunity for courtesy of the floor. This is the opportunity for anybody in the audience to approach the board on a non-agenda item. Randy or Mike, whoever's operating, or Glenn, whoever's operating the organizer, I'll just, if you could just advise me if there's anybody who requests courtesy of, courtesy of the floor this evening. Hearing none? All right. I will note that our invoices and purchasing requisitions have been reviewed by our Township Manager and the Director of Finance. We do need a motion this evening to authorize that our checks be issued to pay our bills as tabulated. Do I hear said motion?
The most.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second? I'll make a second, second from Commissioner Morgan, and can I have a roll call vote, please, Renee?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Mobilio?
Aye.
Commissioner Sutton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye, motion carries. We have no executive session planned for this evening. I need a motion to adjourn, and I want to note, it is 8:28. I am so proud of this team, I could just scream. So do I hear a motion to adjourn?
The most.
Motion from Commissioner Kelly, and I think I heard a second from Commissioner Sutton, and all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Have a fantastic evening, everybody. Be careful out there in the weather.